Welcome everybody to the meeting of the Financial General Purposes Committee of Ramsgate Town Council. Welcome. Do I have any apologies?
We have apologies from councillor Driver who's unwell, councillor Hudson who's unwell, councillor Younger Family Commitment and councillor Mackinson, a family commitment.
Thank you. Item two, are there any declarations of interest? Anybody have any interest to declare? No? Item three is the minutes. To approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the Financial General Purposes Committee held on the 22nd of November 2023. Any questions of record may be considered. Are there any questions of record?
I've no questions, Chair.
Would I have somebody to propose acceptance?
I'll propose the acceptance of minutes, Chair.
Seconded? I'll second it.
Let's check in. Yes.
So I answered.
I thought I was.
Thank you. Those in favour? Item four is the accounts. To receive, consider and note: 4.1 Financial comparison income to 31st of January 2024. Item 2 Financial comparison expenditure to 31st of January 2004. Item 3 Financial statement cash book to 31st of January 2024. Did you want to say anything about the accounts?
Thank you, Chair. Only that way you've nearly got the full financial year's picture. And if you have any questions, please do let me know. And obviously at any time in the year outside of the meeting, if there's ever any questions about the content, please let me know.
Any questions?
No questions, Chair.
And I propose that we note the accounts. Thank you. Item five. Technicians' depot. Receive a written report from Mrs M Morgan, Technician Manager, Projects and Community, regarding the proposed technicians' depot and note this information. Would you like to address the committee?
Chair, perhaps I could give an introduction?
And then if there's any questions?
Thank you, Chair. So this is in preparation for Radford House's redevelopment. A base or a depot for the technicians needs to be established. And last year you considered a report where we looked at possible new sites, options on the port, renting, leasing, buying, and the the site which members wanted to focus on was the creation of a depot at the rear of Radford House. We've sought pre-application advice from TDC, but they require further information about the specifics of what we want to do. And Mrs Morgan has been very busy trying to figure out a plan and the specifics of how this could work and what is required. And Mrs Morgan's present tonight if there's any questions about the content. There's specifically two questions or two options for you to consider, and it's around whether I have to have a porter cabin or a timber frame building.
There are benefits for both. The one benefit for the porter cabin is it's actually built and then just comes and goes in place. Obviously aesthetically they're not as pleasing to the eye, but we have sourced through local company to have maybe a picture of the harbour on the front of it, or something that's pleasing that says Ramsgate and it will be a vinyl and it's very, very reasonable for expression size. So that would tick that box straight away. And then the other one, and obviously if you want to sell it later on, it's movable to sell. And then the other one is a little bit less expensive, but it can be built inside. And hopefully that will pay to everything as well, same size, nothing else. Toilet, kitchen. Maybe it's just the three people is to pot test as well. So it is for the starter. So yes.
Any questions?
Yeah, I was going to say so.
So thanks.
See what we have in here?
Not polite, yeah.
Thank you. I suppose the question that we need to ask is how this fits into the outside of Radford House? What the quality of it is, because obviously it's adjacent to grade two listed building. So that has to be taken into account. Personally, personally, I do like the idea of the timber frame building. A question, is the size of that big enough? Looking at
Yeah, for the staff that we've got, and I don't suppose we're going to exceed having five technicians in there, we might do. But for the staff that we've got and an additional one if that's too long, it should facilitate all of that. We're looking at the two other buildings that are there, there's two. One of them stays there, the all the workshop with all the tools in, and the other one has actually been cleared out completely now and shelved. Maybe we've got some sheets tomorrow and that's going to take all the green tools, whatever survived on in there and everything else. So that's where we can reduce it and take, talking about reducing, taking those two containers away and go into a small 20 foot container. So that would give a much bigger yard. If there's a better, if everyone put my keys out on the back or something like that. It's going to take that.
That is a good point, we are replacing two. Very ugly.
Yeah, indeed, indeed. I mean, personally, I'm fully supportive of the timber frame building and looking at the drawing where it's to be sited at the back, which is, which is fine. And I think it can be beautified, whatever way you want, you can stick a raven on it if you like, with the same as we've got in the street signs, whatever. But yeah, I would support that, I would support that, Chair.
Councillor Cooton?
Yeah, I was going to, hold on, that the porter cabin, I mean, we did raise it a little bit, is also movable if at some point you don't want the technicians sited to the in the back of Radford House, but actually want to move elsewhere. So I was just going to raise that as an advantage of it. I was going to ask you, as the technicians, what you would prefer.
I appreciate you trying to be completely neutral, but I was going to ask if you do actually have a preference. I don't have a preference, but I do consider that maybe it might not be as tough for us. Maybe in the future we might decide that actually Radford House needs the whole area. So the porter cabin would work because that would just be lifted up on the roof. There is a preference, now there is a preference. I mean, porter cabin is the one that I've gone to a couple of local building companies when I looked at the containers and maybe converted those, things like that, but on every avenue, and they said, if you're going to get a porter cabin, go to porter cabin, go to them, they are the ones to go to. And they should facilitate, it should be, you can have air conditioning, it's all, it's everything, it's all singing and dancing. But I think the porter cabin ticks my box purely just in case we don't fit in the back of Radford House at some stage. So that was
The other thing that I was going to comment on was what councillor Alburn said about the visuals of it, because it is actually, I haven't, I haven't been in the back of Radford House for a few weeks, so I don't know how much it's changed, but it wasn't looking very good for being next to a stood building the last time I saw it.
It's changed immensely.
That's it, okay.
It's absolutely, it's spotless in there. I've got a new technician's space, we all worked hard, we're sure, and it is spotless in there, we've got everything moved, we've got rid of rubbish. We've still got a few other things to move. And when the other container comes, if we do do it that way, we would possibly look on, as you say, maybe clad in that container and not having it look like a container. And you'd only need to clad one side, just that visual as you walk in, you don't need to do one side. That's why I thought if there was a vinyl, you could choose something of Ramsgate, so it puts some colour in there as well, because the thing is wood is lovely, it's natural. But if you look down to the back of there, it will be nice to see a little bit of colour. So you could
I must admit, I felt that a porter cabin would be more easy to maintain, it wouldn't need so much work to maintain it.
Well, very little. It's got really good guarantees and warranties on it as well, I think it's up to about 30 years.
Which is good.
Where if you get a builder to come in and build something, I don't know how long guarantees and things, it would be
10 years maybe.
I think, yeah.
Is there any difference about how long it would take either?
I think porter cabin, once you've booked it, it takes 12 weeks. And the other one, I think it was something like eight weeks. So it's not a great deal of
I think choosing.
But then I think you'd have to, I don't know.
Anyone else?
I think the
Yes, please, Chair.
Town clerk wanted to say something.
One thing is, this is Radford House and at the moment when you're driving in, yes, driving in on this side and the gate is here. The eventual plan is that you said there's going to be a gate at the back so that actually the technicians' area will be a secured yard. Because it is, there is, you know, dangerous equipment and machinery, it's not, not to be open access with the goings on in a community centre. There will be a fire exit to come out the back of Radford House, come through the gate. But there will be a gate here, so that, that does give a kind of a visual end to the Radford House community centre area, and this, whereas this will be going on behind it.
Thank you, that was another question I had to clarify is blocking.
Thanks, Chair, I just think, you know, you probably the best thing to do is to, is to get your pre-application advice on both, to see what will, that the conservation officer and planning officers will support. Because obviously a metal container, if that's what you're talking about. Well, sorry, porter cabin, not the kids' cabin. Beg your pardon. Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right, spot on. So whatever that they would prefer, that would go along with the, within the grounds of the listed building, because it needs to associate with it, and I think that's, that's an important part of it. So for me, I don't think we can make, now thinking about it more, that we could actually make a decision as to what one you want, I think you need to get, you can, your advice on both. Then you can make your choice.
Councillor Cooton?
Just ask what other gates you just mentioned, what sort of gates are they, or iron?
Diane. Of the height that the current one is.
Yeah, so it would be visible, so whatever is behind would be visible, but
In your face?
Yes.
As it were?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Would I have a proposal?
Well, I will propose, Chair, that we submit both the both the buildings for pre-application advice, Fannet District Council. And then once we've got that advice, then we can look seriously at what we are going to do, what one we're going to choose.
Is there a cost to that?
Of course. There's a cost to everything.
How much?
Couple hundred quid or something. In the, in the grand scheme of things, you're talking maybe six of 44,000 pounds, it's
There's a time delay of course, but we've got to do it, so.
I'll second that then.
Seconded. All those in favour? It's Karen. Thank you. Next item. Allotments.
I've been looking forward to it.
You say, consider a written report. Nash, allotment officer. And consider how to proceed with the new facilities at the allotment sites. Are you introducing this?
Thank you, Chair. So it's been an aim for a number of years now to replace the toilets at the allotment sites. It's, the new allotment officer has spent a tremendous amount of time and effort trying to research the different options which are in front of you tonight. Mrs Nash is present, if you've got any questions about the specifics. So we've got three possible options and you're asked to consider the budget that's available, which is the preferred option, and if it's above the budget that's available, we'll then make a recommendation to full council next week to consider where the funds could come from. The option from Technician Manager for HR and Health and Safety is actually to go with the portaloos because of the environmental concerns of managing the other two options.
Councillor Albon?
Yeah, I totally, having looked at all, all three of the options. For me, they're the easiest to actually deal with, the rigid frame, the rigid to the top. And you've seen the pictures of the old ones, et cetera, et cetera, where I forget we had rats on the site and this, and, but what I would go for if is the disabled one, because we're bound to have disabled residents who want to be there. And so I think we need to ensure that we're inclusive with that. So that is the one I would go for, Chair.
Would I ask? Would we just need one per site?
Yes, I believe so, because at the moment, although each of the units on each site has two toilets, one has to be closed for six to 12 months for this natural composting to occur underneath. So there's only ever one outlet available at any time. So I can't see there would be any need to have more than one portaloos. Because that's all that's available now, is one outlet.
Well, I've learnt from the Radford House experience that the amount of people you can have in a building determines how many loos you need, and I wondered whether we comply.
No, I believe that only applies to buildings, whereas actually there's no legal entitlement to provide toilets at allotment sites. And the council could make the decision to take the provision away and not have any toilets. But where it's been something that has been on offer for, for many years, I think that would be taken quite negatively by the allotment holders. But there isn't a legal obligation to provide them or, or a quantity, or any quantity of them.
Can I just add to the legal obligation? There isn't a legal obligation to have them, as town clerk said, however, what we do have should legally be accessible. So where we've got the sites where there are wooden steps, they're not lying. So a decision does need to be taken about those sites that have to access toilets, whatever they are, by steps.
Councillor Rusty?
I was just going to say that I think that the idea in principle of having those watered toilets when they were first put in was a really good one, and had we been able to maintain them, that's a great idea. But obviously they're not appropriate to this situation, and the portaloos, I think, will do a much better job. I did want to ask about cleaning.
Yes, the company comes, if we're talking about portaloos cleaning, the company comes weekly.
Right, so it's the same as we had at the Weston Undercliffe.
They remove the effort, which is obviously their licence, it's a proper way to an appropriate facility. And the internal part is cleaned.
It's all cleaned.
Cleanished with, because they are waterless, it's like a chemical system, but they've got hand, hand cleansing.
Hand cleansing, yes.
So they're clean and maintained.
And that's all part of the deal that we've got there, the same as we did at the Weston Undercliffe last summer, and will do again this year. Yes, okay, great.
I must admit, asking volunteers or our technicians to deal with toilets doesn't seem to be part of their
Good remit, isn't it?
So I favour the
I agree, Maxine's behind.
Can I have a proposal then?
I propose that we accept, that we approve option two of the report.
That's seconded, all those in favour? Thank you. Thank you, you two, you're welcome to stay if you wish, but you're also two, two excellent reports, I thought.
Thank you.
Very good.
Very interesting, yeah, thank you.
Very clear.
Very.
Item seven then, is investment strategy. It's got to be the town clerk.
Thank you, Chair. As part of next year's budget, there's an expectation that a rate of interest will be achieved throughout the year, and that's part of the balanced budget. And before we put money into investments, where we seek a bank account that'll realise a level of interest, this is just intended to underpin how, how that's going to be organised.
Right.
Yes, councillor Rusty?
I know that Fannet District Council, there is a process going on to look at an ethical investment strategy and to tie it in with, obviously at the end of the day, as a, as a public body, go for the best investment you can get, but there are considerations built into the policy around the climate commitments and so on, that we've obviously referenced in various other documentation. And I wondered if it would be worth talking to the finance team at Fannet, because I know they are on with this.
No response?
Yeah.
The council is not obliged to have an ethical portfolio, but it is in being deemed, and one of the companies that I've been researching recently is CCLA, which I think are most, most well known for the churches' investments, and that's an ethical portfolio. I think at one point ethical portfolios meant worse returns.
Worse returns.
But actually that's not the case anymore. Thank you.
So we're talking a bit around then.
Could I ask if members think that the, when you look at the objectives?
Yeah.
It puts a premium on security and liquidity. That says that it should have regard to ethical and environmental consideration. Do members think that's the right balance?
The thinking behind the putting liquidity at the top is where actually we are intending to spend a significant amount of the reserves. It's not a sum of money that we're envisaging sitting on for, for years, it is going to be need to be made available. And so it's, it's not something that we want, we need to give months' notice before we can withdraw funds, we do need to be able to make them available for expenditure.
Yeah, I understand that we're, that we're only really permitted to hold reserves if we've got a specific purpose. Okay, can I have a proposal?
Is this for noticing or is this for?
Approval for implementation.
Councillor Harrington's already done that.
I want it, Chair.
Seconded. All those in favour? Thank you. Next item is grants. To receive and note a summary of grants awarded in the 2023-2024 year. And to receive a written report from Miss Alfredo Townclerk and consider the various questions contained therein around the processing of grant applications. The Grant Fund Criteria February 2024 is also included as part of this discussion. Townclerk?
Thank you, Chair. So the first item for noting is a summary of grants that have been awarded in this financial year from the deputy town clerk. A request of this information, because I think it will be useful or pertinent to your concern, the matter to be discussed in the second item, but didn't want that to be, this information to be lost within that report, that I thought this was actually quite, quite interesting for you to see in its, as its own item, but not for a decision other than noting.
Quite interesting.
Chair, we note that, then I propose that we note unless anybody's going to think they wish to.
Noted, Chair.
That's seconded, all those in favour? Second part?
Thank you, Chair. So the next piece of work comes from a request from councillor Crittenden to reconsider how the grants that we receive are processed and whether there could be a way to improve this. The report's broken down into stages, and I think there's merit in tackling this in stages. So to begin with, we've got the grant remits. So I've put in writing the remit for the Ramsgate Fund, Events Fund and Community Services Fund. We've had the Ramsgate Fund defined before, but we haven't had the Events Fund and Community Services Fund defined in writing. And so you're asked to consider, have I, have I captured these as you think they should be? And I'm happy to approve that these remits are correct.
Any questions or comments?
I like the descriptions, I think they're very clear, and I think they will be useful for, for reference in the future.
On that.
Just wondering, can I on both the Events Fund and the Community Services Funds, there's no limit to grant given, no limit to grant given, and I'm just wondering whether we need to put any limit to the grants, because every time we run out by December, and I'd like us to stagger it a bit better through the year and perhaps put a limit to what we can give here, because we do get people expecting quite a lot of money from us, and other people therefore not being able to get so much, and I would like a, a limit.
I'd agree, yeah.
Do you have a figure in mind?
Well, I mean, this is, this is over 40, 45,000, aren't they? We've got 3,500 limit on it, so. 4,000, a bit mean, 4,000. limit on it, so, yeah, four thousand five, a bit mean, four thousand five.
I can see putting a limit on the Events Fund. Is um might be useful. But the Community Grant Fund, I think I would like more flexibility myself.
Can I make a comment? Well, I think perhaps we haven't got to this bit yet, but the original proposal that I was making about the the grant funding was that we did one award four times a year for each fund, um and that it would be capped to probably twenty-five percent of the year's fund in each quarter, uh which would automatically give you um cap anyway. So that 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 was part of my original proposal, so that, you know, you would have a panel four times a year, make recommendations on each fund four times a year, but the the budget would be divided into four. Now, if we want to adjust the level of budget according to when um we expect the highest number of requests to come in, I I'm not sure we can do that in the first year, but certainly for the first year, I was I was suggesting a a straight twenty-five percent. Um, and that would automatically put a limit on it because we couldn't afford.
Once again, I can see that for the Ramsgate Fund and the Events Fund, but the community grants tend to be in financial year for the whole year. Just the nature of what's been asked. Councillor Alba.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I I just to reiterate, I think I'm not going to lose anything with this. It's exactly what councillor Everington said and councillor Crand- Crandon said. The whole, the whole problem is that money gets dished out early and then we're, and then we're scrabbling like we did last year to reduce the amounts for everybody else who was left. And normally, as you quite rightly say, like with with the community stuff, it's, it's, they will come in early and they will do it. And people who, and um maybe like uh event people or or on Ramsgate Fund who come in on a regular basis will know to get their application. They've done it a hundred times and then, and then you get a one-off something, what's to come in and get some, and we haven't got the money there. So that was the whole point of grabbing it, not dragging it, but dragging it out as in in a quarter year and that, in on a quarterly basis. And I think that's, that's, that's the way. And and as you say, so if you do it in a quarter, you've got that quarterly budget, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, that's right.
Councillor Austin.
Town Clerk, just remind us how much we gave uh this year to the the Citizens Advice Bureau and the Rate Crisis Centre.
Uh so actually, uh Rate Crisis Counseling Service uh didn't request funding. Uh the provision of a room is.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Um, the Citizens Advice Bureau were given, I believe it was twenty thousand pounds.
Right, thank you.
Okay, I need a proposal. What, shall we go through the other bits here first?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure I'm not looking at it properly, but it says here Ramsgate's C P S craft equipment. And that is project one thousand six hundred and twenty-one, amount requested one thousand six hundred and twenty-one. We're paying them a hundred percent. Uh, two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight. What am I not reading right?
I don't know.
Pages are on. Pages are on.
Yes.
Now, what's the number, page number?
Page four, four. Page four, down below Hold Creative Spaces.
I think we'll have to investigate that.
I think this, because they've been transferred. Thought they were getting all that much.
I'm sure this project was, there was craft equipment and then I think there was also the purchase of kayaks or. And so I wonder whether actually we're looking at the, in the first two columns, you're looking at the sum for craft equipment or actually it, that doesn't represent the full amount. But I remember the reason why they got this, this funny figure ending twenty-eight pounds and forty-three pence was because it was the last penny of the budget uh that was available, that we said it was the last one to be considered and we said, right.
There you go, that's what there is.
Yeah, so we've over, yeah, we give more than they ask for. Excellent.
Round to the next section.
Yeah.
Uh next one, uh grant funding criteria. We've had um thi- this document has uh, we've had her a while, a couple of years. And um in purple, there's some some general amendments that don't necessarily relate to this inquiry, but as I reread it, things that I thought actually i- i- improve and add to um uh that that the first draft, um I'm suggesting it. See, you've got some, ignore the changes in green. It's the changes in purple, which I don't think change the um the old direction, but actually add add some more clarity. Uh so you're asked to consider whether those purple changes are acceptable.
Any comments? Yes.
I think I understand what four ten is trying to say, but I'm not sure it's entirely. So I think what we're saying is we'd be happy to have a a application back from an organisation where we've said we need you to make some changes to this.
Uh but they can't.
They can't.
Just send another one. Yeah, so don't keep reapplying. So we've said, no, that's, that's it.
Perhaps so, so rather than repeat, I I think you would have to say repeat applications will not be considered except when, because then it makes it clearer off front. Yeah?
So that will read how?
Repeat applications for the same project will not be considered, except for when the council has requested that add an amendment to the application.
All right. Councillor Crittenden.
Four point nine, only one grant per year per organisation will be awarded. Applicants who have made an unsuccessful application can apply again in the year for a different project. Now, going back to my four times a year, if ten people apply for a hundred thousand pound to them, but obviously we can't award them all in that first quarter, so can they resubmit to a second quarter? Because that says they can't.
Up to the members, but I'd I'd envisage that, no, if if the council has not approved that that project.
I I would see uh if they, if the panelists has recommended that, they're going to get it, because there are better projects. If they resubmit, they might be the best project in the next round.
Right.
Which would then um.
I think four point nine says they can apply again in the year. If they fail first.
Yeah, application can apply again in a year.
For a different project, so I know I'm saying, I um, I'm saying they should be able to apply to the same project.
Same or a different project.
Because it's a bit like, you know, the, you know, a job applicant is you're the best on the day. Well, you go on another day and you might not be the best, if that kind of thing.
Chair?
Councillor, Town Clerk.
Thank you. Uh does this scenario not fall into four ten? Repeat applications for the same project will not be considered unless invited to resubmit.
No.
Uh, and it could be that you're invited to resubmit because you need to clarify or improve on something, or it could be that you're invited to spit, resubmit at a different time in the year.
And it needs to be added into that bit, yes. Somehow, it's, it's just that um I don't want to penalise anyone who may not, you know, if you have a big batch in in one quarter. Um and it could be that you say you had very good application, but just on this this panel, there were others that just pressed it. If you'd like to submit later in the year, we can promise that you know, it will be successful, that would be fine. But somehow I would allow it. At the moment, four point nine does allow resubmission project. It might be very, very good, but there were some very, very, very good ones that that picked it in place for that, that money on that occasion.
If we just lose four different projects, does that work?
That works, yeah.
Councillor Austin.
Can I then propose a a change to my previous change to to four ten, to to read, except when the council has invited the applicant to resubmit? That's all it needs to say, because it could be applicant has been invited to resubmit because there's something we don't understand about their project or something not clear, or it could just be that they came fourth and there were only three grants awarded.
Yeah, is that okay? That that came forth into it. That's much clearer than I was. Thank you.
Any comments?
Anything else? So I'm then just happy with the the purple?
Yep, yeah.
It's it's four point eleven, pretty much what we've um been doing. I'm just conscious that if we, if we're submitting in the fourth quarter, it's going to be in the next.
I think we really mean that the money's spent in the financial year, haven't we? Well, completed.
Spent in the financial year, April to April. All right.
Councillor Austin.
This wasn't about that. There was some discussion at a previous meeting quite some time ago, where some members were unhappy about the idea of people applying for grants when they were going to take payment themselves for a day rate and so on. But I don't know how we would how we would put something like that into our criteria or indeed whether it's desirable to do so.
I've mentioned that at um other considerations to to come in a few, a few items time.
All right, okay.
So are we happy with um our conditions?
Yes, great.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. So the the next item is processing of applications. So currently, all applications are considered on a monthly basis in the order in which they arrive. Uh this is beneficial for the applicants because they don't need to wait long for a decision. However, it does mean that it's difficult for the council to consider the whole grant's picture for the year when it's it's a continuous piece deal. Uh you're asked to consider um if having four grant awarding council meetings in the year would be preferable. Uh for example, February, May, August and November. Uh February is where there's there's things taking place in Easter. Uh it 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 is kind of a crossing of the financial year there, but um so you'd be committing next year's budget, but discussing it in February. But I think that is necessary because things are starting to happen in April and May.
Councillor Alba, Councillor Crittenden.
I think we just have to give ourselves a little bit of leeway there, because you know, things don't always run right. Things maybe like two weeks later or something happens, one in two years, and really it's not, it's not really a problem, is it? I think we need to include that.
My my comment is, it's warm in February, we all know what the applications for the whole year are expected to be, um not a hundred percent, but we will still have that twenty-five percent, which could be tweaked, adjusted later in the year, if need be. So I would think that that would be okay.
Have to bear in mind, don't we, how long it takes.
Yeah.
These processes to. So is that okay for, yeah?
Yes, great. Um, and then within, back to the the grant funding policy, if you have a look at the green text, this is where um suggested having uh with uh a um a grant scrutiny panel. And uh, once a grant awarding decision should be made in a public meeting, but whether you think there's merit in having um a small group of councillors who are meeting before the council meeting to really scrutinise the um the applications. And I've also drafted a um grant assessment form that that group would complete um to to really kind of go into the the specifics. That group would then uh make a recommendation to the council. They would not make a decision, but they would, but they would make a recommendation. The full council wouldn't be able to override that decision. Um but that that group would um be, you know, really trying to think of the ins and outs, uh get more information from the applicant if necessary, speak to the ward councillors to see if they, what their thoughts are. Um as a starting point, I've suggested that the membership of this group is the uh Chair of Finance and General Purposes, Chair of Town Promotion Committee and the Madam Mayor. And uh within the policy on the green text, you you've got a suggestion on on how that would work.
Um.
I've got no disrespect now, I'm just, I'm just asking why the mayor. It's it's unusual to have a mayor be the mayor's councillor, so um it's unusual to have the mayor involved, because I've never seen that in any documents that we've had. Maybe it's fine, I don't know. Just why I'm asking why.
It was, it was mainly us, I was trying to think of who who's who's logical and that um uh mayor. Uh that the uh the mayor of the day tends to be quite uh knowledgeable about and in and play, you know, playing a role in quite a lot of the events.
No, I haven't got a problem. I'm just asking why, because the mayor, the mayor is in in here. In any documentation, I haven't got.
I must admit, when I read it, I wondered why nominate any particular post, why not elect the the panel?
And that would be absolutely fine.
Um and whether three was enough. Councillor Harrington.
Totally agree with you, don't you, I'm like, whether three is enough, elect. But I'm also thinking, we've had applications here in the past, that I've had some quite big concerns about, particularly with the mental health ones and this sort of. Uh I mean, I'd like to be able to investigate them all thoroughly. I'd like to get outcome measures, whether this is, you know, an appropriate sort of use of money. So I think this is a really good idea to scrutinise some of these, yeah.
Two.
Councillor Crittenden.
I was thinking of more than obviously the three. Um I was probably thinking probably the best part, half of of council, if you think about numbers, that would take us to.
Too many.
Too many.
Five, four, the four.
Personally, I would go four, but I mean, I think that's enough.
Should have another number. Uh, it, it, um the reason I think that the Chair of the G P, Chair of Town Promotion on there are because um there are budgets um that are being spared, but I think that they have to be on there. Uh I don't think necessarily, I mean, it's, you know, if the chairs of those two committees wanted to be on there, they could, but they don't have to be, is what I would say. But I understand why you put them on there, because that's where the budget falls under. Um and so I can see that they're susceptible, but.
I tell you, can I just ask a question, Chair? Um, there should be an officer on this as well.
I think so.
Um, I think that that might be four, or you can have four councillors and an officer.
Town Clerk.
Uh Deputy Town Clerk will attend a minute and and help the panel.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's really for guidance, if it's needed.
Councillor Austin.
Might I ask, picking up on councillor Everington's comment, whether it's, it will be appropriate for this panel to ask specialist advice where appropriate? Is that part of, so for example, if a mental health project came in and councillor Heatherington was not on the panel, whether councillor Heatherington could be consulted about, you know, does this look like a viable project and is it going to do the the things that they're saying it's going to? Would that be appropriate? Just to, can we make some provisions for that somehow?
Yes, um the only thing is, uh it's, I didn't envisage the um the panel having a budget to buy in professionally.
No, I was thinking about informing other members or.
The the members to act logically and that if there's uh that that application regarding rental health.
The councillor Heatherington, Youth Services Council. Counselor Heatherington, Youth Services Council, we, according to.
I charge a lot.
Counselor.
Can I make a suggestion? Um, when the papers are sent out to the um panel members, that um either the papers or or a summary or something is sent to everybody saying, these are the applications coming up. Um, I mean, if it's like a summary, so that maybe um Counselor Heatherington can go, oh, that's a mental health one, I know that that organisation, good or bad or whatever, um, and can actually then say, uh, can I offer some input in in whatever way?
I do think it'd be better if that sort of querying is done by the panel in public.
It it would still be in the panel, yes.
I do, what you, sorry, Chair, if if I may, um, what you can't do, it drags out.
No.
The panels there is gets what they are and makes a decision as to what they should, they will want to propose. But it's certainly, because I don't know when they're going to be held, whether anybody can be there, whether it's a week before, you can't drag it out before the meeting.
That's why I made that suggestion.
It's got to be a week before.
Yeah.
That's why I made that suggestion, because the panel can't meet and then go, oh, we need to go and get that advice.
Yes, exactly.
The panel that, so it is incumbent on the rest of us to read and have a look and think, yeah, I'd like, I think I've got something to say on that, and then those comments can be taken.
What you're doing is doubling up, Chair, sorry, I'm, sorry, this is me, all right? I think you're doubling up on work, right?
Well, just picking up on the on the issues that have been raised.
Yeah, I I understand that, I understand that, but I think the more you go out, you know, you, we only normally get the agenda with the items on it, right? So what I'm saying is, you as the, or whoever it is on 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 the panel, gets it, looks at it and gives their gives their recommendations, and the rest of us will look at it when we get it and look at what they are, that. Otherwise, you're gonna, you know, you're doing, everyone else, you're gonna send it all out and then you're gonna send it all out again, so.
Yeah, I will, I suggested a summary just to give the opportunity, um, picking up really on Counselor Heatherington's concern.
Well. Counselor Heatherington.
Okay, right, if a summary is sent out and I say something, for instance, that it pertains to substance misuse or mental health, which I do know things about, then I would perhaps investigate that a little bit further and come back to the panel with my sort of observations about that. So would that fit that?
That's kind of what I was thinking, yeah, that's, thank you, that's what I had in mind.
Yeah.
Chair.
So what what you're suggesting is that when the items go out to the panel, that all councillors get a list of what they're considering that that time?
A shortlist rather than all of the papers necessarily.
Yeah.
Does that work?
The names of the organisations and the project.
It's okay, Chair, but what happens when you get late ones coming in? And it's just on the deadline day.
There is a deadline.
I know, but what if it comes in on deadline day and you and you've and you can't, you haven't got the option then of going out and asking some somebody else what that is?
It will, the the deadline will.
No, I'm suggesting that it that the list, the list goes to all members at the same time as the complete list of the panel.
Yeah.
Goes out, is mailed out to the panel.
And and that list will be piled on deadlines out.
Which will have to be something like three days before the panel's due to be.
To another.
That work?
Yeah. It's not.
No, it's, I'm just, I'm just saying what I think, that's all.
I think we think it can't make sense.
So.
The list saying the panel will be considering the following application, yes.
Is that accepted?
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, no, that's that's my prerogative.
Do you have a comment?
Could I just make a comment, please? It, where the mayor's at the bottom, being mayor, you do have an idea of uh money, as you know, because it's got to last a year, so you need to be careful what you spend it on and and what benefit is going to amount to this money.
Hmm.
So you do have some idea of what it's about. Thank you.
So, um. I I'll be agreeing with you for on the panel. Is that great?
Yes.
Yes.
Should they be, as has been suggested, perhaps the chairs of each of the committee plus the mayor? Because we've got three committees. Or would you want them elected?
Do you want to be on the panel, Dave?
I'm not bothered even.
I think that you're elected, those that have got an interest in it, because I don't really see that if we're chairs for all committees, I mean, what planning has got to do with this really.
No, no, the Chair of FGP and.
Yes, I saw those two, but I thought you just said the chair.
Chairs for all committees, yes, yes.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Right, okay, okay. Well, I don't object to it in theory because I think it is quite interesting how we look at the, um, I mean, I I find that particularly interesting, how we look at the funding and everything else, so I do not have an objection, but I do think perhaps elected is more democratic.
But I'll propose that that we're elected to panel then.
Okay, I stick to that.
I agree with you, Chair.
Yes.
That's good. Next question.
So uh, next week, there's going to be a council meeting and um there are some grant applications that are going to need to be processed that we can't hold off any longer. Um, so we'll put those on the agenda just in the normal way, without a panel in place to scrutinise them, just to get through the the month of February. And then also at that council meeting, uh, to nominate the representatives of the grant scrutiny panel.
Yep.
Could I, could I ask then, um, Chair, if an email can go out to all councillors to say, this is what we're doing, and so they're prepared when they come next week, that's all.
Good.
Yeah, it can go up as the agenda, couldn't it? Okay.
Can I just confirm, I envisaged this as starting with effect from the new financial year, so we're confirming that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And and the summary list.
Anything else?
Let's see, and then, uh, is everyone happy with the grant assessment form?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, actually, the grant application form itself, um, there's a recommendation that we add on um a section, or has your organisation received a grant from this council within the last three years and then to provide details?
Yeah.
Yes. And then also, there's some other considerations, which are things that um members have mentioned, and I'm not sure if and how to 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 realise them. Um, so, and there's no right or wrong, it really is for the the councils to come up with a scheme that you think works well for this commu-, you know, our community. Um, should the council only fund up to a certain amount of any project? Or potentially a hundred percent is fine? Um, should the council repeatedly fund the same projects, uh, you know, year after year? Or could there be a limit on repeat applications, that you're not allowed to return with that project for um a couple of years? Uh, this is something that Counselor Austin uh mentioned earlier on, and it was um originally uh brought up by Counselor Wing, um, are there any thoughts of preference in in relation to professional projects, where the applicant and colleagues draw an income from the the project, as opposed to projects where everyone is a volunteer? Um, and also, it was discussed uh at the beginning of this item, but I don't think we've um confirmed it. The the allocation money throughout the year, is this going to be um spent quarterly? Um, uh, except for community services?
Yeah, I I I would support that, I would support what Caster said about the quality thing, and what the Sheriff said about the uh the other part, the last one, that we don't.
Community.
Community should be done twice a year or once a year?
Twice a year, this is.
Um, it was, so it it, I think the applications will still come in throughout the year. Um, I mean, I think the the big one is start of the financial year to last year, but it's whether we say that actually that the budget itself should be uh only spent in quarters, or do we permit that um application at the beginning for something that will last all year?
Yeah, I mean, if if something like the CAB, where we're we're funded for a post.
And they need to.
That they need to know, yeah.
Indeed.
We have a history of applications on a month by month basis, those that make the money for the year do tend to come in at the beginning.
Um.
That previous point about the other criteria.
Hmm.
I think they're all pertinent and couldn't we just add them to the list? Because we're not, we're not waiting, as I say, we're not waiting. And in any way.
I'm sure we can have a discussion again.
So if we consider, say, that if we're paying professionally, you know, if the applicant is paying themselves professional fees, we might want to take it into account.
Yes.
Not not exclude.
Yeah.
The CAB is starting costs, isn't it?
So if if we just add it to this list of fifteen, it's something that would be taken into account.
Yeah.
Not. And it's not not a veto, that application necessarily.
And it's not an as independent on the application, is it? Because there might be instances where it was very necessary for somebody to pay themselves some sort of fee, as long as it's proportional.
I mean, some of the applications that we get are to part fund huge.
Yeah.
Um, organisations and events and.
Yeah.
So a professional fee is probably quite reasonable for somebody, you know, people that put it on. Consider.
Yeah, Chair, I I, with regard to number two, should the council repeatedly fund the same projects? Usually this happens with events, which is quite true, yes. Um, I do think that with some of the organisations, there is an expectation that they will automatically get uh uh funding from our T C, and and I think, um, obviously, we're hopeful that there will be other types of events than the ones that we continually have, not saying never had anything, but just that, but I I think we need to make uh reference to that, that, only to point out that that will be considered.
Yeah.
They are a continual, if they are, if they are continual continual applicant, um, a continuous applicant, that is, each year for the same same event, that we will con-consider that.
Yeah.
Care.
I mean, that could just be another one to add to this list of things that will be considered. When we first started giving grants at this council, we had that we would, that we would reduce, if it went from year to year.
Reduce it.
Twenty percent.
Yeah.
Each year, but it never seemed to work.
Hmm, interesting.
Counselor.
You go first, Helen.
Um, I I thought you, your hand's stuck, because I I wanted to go back to the hundred percent thing because uh that's reminded me that there's a thing about using our own though, when you get grant funding. And uh, I know that that's perhaps not top of the whether to award it or not, but I'm not sure it's always used. And I I just have a concern that when when we are a hundred percent funding something, we're not grant funding it, we're sponsoring it.
Hmm.
And it's a different concept. Can we call it grant fund when?
It's quite, it's quite true.
Hundred percent, and it, you know, that is actually sponsorship. I've said it.
Is that, is that different?
I say this, it in terms of the the local government act, uh, and our our powers of expenditure, there there's no difference between a grant and sponsorship, there's that, there's no legal definition.
That's amazing.
Just really to add to what Helen said, because I have heard from certain residents and what she's said, but uh huge disappointment about the amount of money they've got in comparison to certain other things that we funded. Don't seem seem to, well, I don't think that there's an understanding of just how small our pot is and how we try and, you know, use the wisdom of Solomon with this, because uh, you know, you do hear.
Extremely dissatisfied comments.
I wonder who that's from?
Well, I. I will not name it. And perhaps, you know, understanding it just how we're trying to do this to be fair.
Well, hopefully, at the end of this process, it would be a more logical and understandable conclusion that we come to, that's the start with, isn't it?
Yeah.
Counselor.
Why, I I suggested this and exactly why I suggested four times a year and, you know, to try and professionalise, I think was the word I I used, because it got very, felt very chaotic, uh, something.
I think that, Chair, sorry, I I think the other thing is that our residents forget, that our event event people, whatever, forget, this is our residents' money.
Hmm.
And it's what our residents are giving uh to this council.
Yeah.
For us then to then pull out, so there are events and there are things to, things that will support the level, uh, that will support our landscape for what they need. So um, I think there's, uh, maybe that explains.
Two. Highlight.
How are you? Counselor Austin.
I wondered, perhaps we might actually strengthen four point two on the grant conditions, where say, people should assume that funding will continue on a year by year basis, perhaps we should, that should be number one, and we should say, our resources are frequently oversubscribed, organisations should not assume they'll get grants at all.
Yeah.
Because there often, there's often stiff competition, and if you're applying, you know, for a second or third year or whatever, you must not assume, and 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 have that right at the top of the front, so that everybody has that in their condition to make, they, and we've spelt it out to them. It I it won't prevent them, no, it won't prevent them from being dissatisfied, but at least we will have said it quite clearly.
I guarantee, but I don't want to, I wouldn't want to put in, you know, if it's the third or fourth time, it gets less and less likely.
No, I wouldn't want to say that, but like you were saying, uh, organisations should not assume that funding will continue on a year basis, I think that's fine, but just put something in before that that says you shouldn't assume you'll get funded at all because um our funds are frequently oversubscribed.
Chair, I mean, just, there is no guarantee.
There's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee there.
Yes, but there's a lot of demand for our funds and, you know, we try to be fair, blah, blah.
Because there's some events that are put on in the town that I'm quite happy to come to year after year.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
I'll be there.
Uh, I just, um, it is worth note uh noting about contracts, and it's one thing with, that possibly does tie in with the, when there's a hundred percent given, um, to just make sure that we recognise that we we are, we're giving funding for some, for something that someone else is going to organise.
Hmm.
There's no contract, we take no responsibility or liability for that event, yes.
Counselor.
Chair, I just asked a question, is, once again, money's a big deal, do we get confirmation from the events, organisers, whoever it is, whether that's taking place and how that's been spent, and I think that would be definitely.
We asked for a report, we asked for a report.
That's right, do we always get them, that's the report?
Hmm, I don't know, we always get them.
So if you're there.
Right, where are we?
Oh, sorry, that's last. I'm seeing, and could I just suggest a slight change of wording? On grant conditions, item four point six, I think there's been two things that have been put together there and it doesn't make any sense anymore. and it doesn't make any sense anymore. We must be satisfied that you, the applicant, has the necessary, it should be applicant have or it should be that the applicant has, but not half of one and half of the other. It just confused. Thank you.
Why didn't you stop that? You assumed you're.
I'm not the teacher proof either.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yes, indeed.
Item nine is climate change task group. To receive and note the minutes of the climate change task group meeting held on the sixth of December. To receive and note the minutes of the climate change task group meeting held on the thirty first of January. To consider and approve a draft procurement and greener working policy. Town Clerk first.
Thank you, Chair. So for two seconds minutes of noting, the Chair of the group is present if there's any questions.
I just wanted to say there isn't an action plan update with these, which there was with the last set. Might we circulate that, members?
And the third item, the procurement of greener working policy, that ties in with action one from the list of actions. And that is for approval.
Anybody have any comments to make?
No.
Councillor Austin.
I think you're accepting lots of really good ideas here, including one that didn't. We were talking about just the other day in an entirely separate context. So I'm very happy to see them. Thank you.
I propose acceptance, Chair.
Yeah.
Agreed?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Then we need to, what's the formal words we have to use?
To speak to the public.
Do I have to read this out?
I think yes.
Okay, it is, we're going to need to exclude the press and public because matters confidential are coming up. It is recommended that under the Public Bodies' Admission to Meetings Act nineteen sixty, as extended by S one hundred of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy two, the public and accredited representatives of newspapers are excluded from the meeting for the following items of business on the grounds that they involve the likely disclosure of exempt information as defined in part one of the Schedule twelve A of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy two by virtue of the paragraph specified against the item.
Well done, Chair.
Vote to.
Oh, yes. We voted for that. Yeah, thank you. It's carried.